That's what happens when you can't.
All right, Jay. All right. Chase. He's a free thing of Jake there.
Special meeting of the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board to order, and I will ask Mr. Whitlatch to take the role.
John Weichart here.
Doug Bruce.
Here.
Eric Spoonmore.
Here.
Joyce Poling.
Here.
Adam Teese.
Here.
Jay Baer.
Here.
And Jim Silverstein. Think is supposed to be joining us remotely, but he doesn't, isn't there yet. So for now, he's not present.
Yeah, and let me, let me mention that in attendance, I saw Councilperson Sydney Zulik come in, so want to recognize that she's here with us today. Second item in business is the treasures report. Mr. Spoonmore.
Yes, so on Wednesday, October ninth, the Capital Improvement Board's budget of eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred dollars for two thousand twenty-five did receive approval by the Bloomington City Council. This is part of the overall budget. Approval for the city of Bloomington. The vote to approve the city budget, the Bloomington Capital Improvement Boards was unanimous by all nine members of council. So just a big thanks to all of our partners on city council for their continued collaboration with the Capital Improvement Board. And helping to achieve a very positive and successful project for the community. But that was all I had. Just wanted to share that budget information for two thousand twenty-five.
Any questions for Mr. Spoonmore? All right, see none. Moving on, item number three, project definition documents, scope and cost estimate review. And all of our friends are listed parenthetically to report out on this. So who's, who wants to go first? Who's going first? So Lisa Gomperts. Yeah, whatever, whatever's best for you. So Lisa Gomperts from Schmidt Associates. Amy Greisel from Convergence.
All right. Well, good afternoon, everyone. We are here to basically show you what our project definition phase is, which is essentially the first phase in the design process. And to seek approval. Yeah, how do you do it? Eddie's not working. Right now. There we go. So our agenda, we want to start with our goals and the public input that we have gotten. Our schedule, we'll talk about the building program and the actual design, the plans and elevations. And then we want to give a summary of where we are with our lead scorecard, at least as we're projecting right now. Our construction cost estimate, what we'll cover that. And then we want to talk about kind of our next steps as we move forward with sort of evaluating some of our alternates as well. So starting with our goals, and these have been consistent since we started this process. The first is to expand the space. We know that the current facility is needing some additional space to be able to cover the types of programming that they want to do. They want to create inspiring architecture, a memorable experience that gets people here and remembered, helps them remember the facility itself. They want to showcase Bloomington and the amenities that are here in the space. And in the community, and enhance the connectivity around the whole downtown area, and achieve sustainability as part of this project as well. This was some of the through line comments that we got as part of our public inputs session that I think just helped to support those goals as well. We want to incorporate limestone, and you will see how we have done that. We want to elevate public art, both interior and exterior of the building. Address the pedestrian scale, connect with nature, and we're looking at a roof garden to do some of that. Engaging architecture contextual with the downtown Bloomington area, and these were direct quotes and Instagram or in authentic. So in terms of schedule, you'll see highlighted there the project definition completion. That's what we're doing today. And then we have two more design phases. This final design will start as soon as we get approval here, and it'll take us through February. Construction documents then will take us through the middle of next year in July. And then we will bid. Now, we'll say we'll have a couple of early packages that will be a little earlier than that July timeframe, but that, that'll be the final package in terms of completion. We'll start construction then in June. And the goal is to finish the expansion, the new construction in early twenty twenty-seven, and then the renovation scope will take us through the middle part of twenty twenty-seven.
Hey, thanks. I'm David Greisel with Convergence Design, working with you on this project. This is the program that we are designing to, and this, these numbers have been updated to reflect the current state of the preliminary design documents that you'll be asked to approve today. So we have gotten put the building on a little bit of a diet and gotten the new construction number down very close to sixty thousand square feet, which is the target we were always shooting for. So I think we're we're just about there on that and still managing to maintain importantly, thirty thousand square feet of sellable space in the addition, which includes the vast majority of that, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred eighty-six square feet of that. It's in the large flexible ballroom exhibit hall space. And the remainder is in some additional breakout meeting rooms upstairs that will allow the the expansion to function somewhat separately for multiple simultaneous events if we want to do that. The program for the existing building is pretty much exactly what it's always been because we're not really proposing to add any space or take any space away from the existing building. Should point out, though, that the bridge connector, which is below the line here, two thousand two hundred eighty-two square feet, also has been put on a little bit of a diet. So it's a little bit slimmer than it was in previous iterations. So the total including the existing square, existing building is just over a hundred thousand square feet in total. And about forty-seven thousand and change square feet of sellable space. That ratio of two to one gross square footage to sellable square footage is very industry standard. So I want you to know that it's, it's kind of right where it should be in terms of total space, sellable space. But that's, that's quite normal in our industry. So this is what the plan looks like today. And if you're comparing in your mind, this plan to the one that you saw two weeks ago, would be, you'd be hard pressed to tell the difference, but we have put the plan on a little bit of a diet. We have pressed some of the pre-function areas a little bit around the the big exhibit hall. Just very slightly to get the square footage down. We have eliminated a small chunk of space in the southeast corner here. So the service corridor along the back of the hall no longer connects to the pre-function corridor on the side of the hall, but functionally, that is a very small compromise in terms of the overall functionality of the building. You can still get to all the spaces from the service corridor. And you can still get to all the various, whoops, sorry. Get to all the various breakout rooms from the pre-function corridor. When this big space is divided up into as many as eight separate kind of meeting rooms, you can still get to all of those from both the pre-function side and from the service side. So functional compromise is minimal at that point. And then, you know, we've tightened up everything a little bit. So the service corridor got a little shorter. All this got a little tighter, but I think still very functional. And that's, the key thing for me is to keep it, keep it functional and keep it working. On the second level, same story. I mentioned that the connecting bridge has gotten skinnier, but it's still tying two buildings together so they function as a single thing. We have elevators and escalators getting you up on this side. We have an elevator and a grand stair taking you down on that side. Lisa mentioned the occupiable roof garden at the second level that will be a green space that will look out to the outside. So this looks like a meeting room, but it's actually an outdoor space. The two meeting rooms on this level are now located down here. There's an elevator immediately at the end of the bridge when you come across, as well as some restrooms. So that's what's going on upstairs. And this is the roof plan, which you haven't seen before. Just illustrating conceptually that the green roof, what we need for stormwater treatment and, and a little bit of stormwater retention is mostly on what I would call the low roof of the building, which is the roof that, sorry. But the roof that sits on top of the pre-function space is the low roof. This big rectangle in the middle is the high roof over the exhibit hall and ballroom space, which we are not putting green roof on because of the long spans, the weight of that green roof would make the long spans structurally very expensive to accomplish. So we have confined green roof to the low roof area. And then this back part of the building where the service stuff is, is also where screened rooftop mechanical equipment will be located. So what does it look like? These are the elevations as they currently exist. You can see we have the, the big limestone pier in the middle of the, this is the, the third street facade that you're looking at here. We've got curtain wall blazing in these large bays marching down Third Street. There's kind of an opportunity here for art and/or a big advertising banner that would be sort of temporary for a particular event. But it could also be an art space. You can see a hint of the connecting bridge going across College Avenue. And then we have primary entrances to the building at both the Third and College corner and the Third and Walnut corner. Those would be the main public ways for people to access the expansion. And then behind, you can see the volume of the exhibit slash ballroom space sort of popping up behind, but as you will see in a minute from street level, you really aren't much aware of that volume. So this is a little bit more close up view of the facade treatment. We have tried very hard to mirror without copying the architectural expression from this building. So you can see the, the sort of windows within windows motif that we've developed to, to speak to the, the window arrangement in this building and kind of reflect that over here. Likewise, the, the masonry piers that hold up the, the main roof will be very similar in proportion to the piers on this building. So even though it's a more open, more transparent facade than the facade of this building, we think it reflects architecturally a nice compatibility with, with the structure. So what does that look like? So here's a perspective view of the Third and College entry from, this is kind of up close, looking at the building. You can see how the canopy extends out. Over the sidewalk, there is a hole in the roof where we're allowing light into, into the green roof area, which is this balcony looking thing right here. And then you can see the bridge kind of going off to the right over College. This view is from a little bit farther back, also at Third and College, showing the existing building across the way. The bridge connector and then the new building and looking, looking at it kind of its full extent down Third Street. Gives you an idea of how the two buildings relate to each other. And then this is a more head-on view across Third Street. Kind of showing that same elevation view that we saw over now in three D in perspective. And you can see the curtain wall glazing. Whoops, you don't get the wrong button again. Yep. And then I, oh yeah, I went backwards. That's what I did. This shows the, the bays of curtain wall glazing along the front facade. And of course, the, the sloping sopit that sort of helps define and give the building a distinctive architectural form. So that's kind of where we are quickly from a design standpoint, and basically kind of walking through some of our other scope items.
Flipping a little bit more to the technical side of things. H V A C, our engineers have been evaluating three different systems through the project definition phase. And as we've done that, we've been evaluating first costs as well as the efficiencies and long-term maintenance of these systems. And we're moving towards option three from a cost perspective. It was pretty comparable to option two, but it does offer more efficiency and also helps us with our sustainability goals with additional lead points as well. And as we talk about our lead scorecard, our goal is a lead silver target. And in order to achieve that, you have to have fifty points. Right now, we are projecting fifty-two. So it appears that we'll hit that goal. We'll continue to refine this and to dig into this more, particularly in this next phase. One of the things that we'll be doing, you'll see in our next steps, is working on bringing a commissioning agent on board to start helping with some of this as well and evaluating some of our systems with us. Cost.
And this is Chris Seoli with Whittle Brothers. So just a quick overview of where we are. We've worked pretty diligently over the past few weeks. Focused on the, the overall construction budget, trying to ensure that we can meet the goal and be effective in delivering what they ask us. So what you see on this slide is what we are saying we can include in the base bid with confidence. We have the, sorry, the overall expansion costs, which is on the far left, the forty-eight million six hundred eighty-three thousand. The connector is also included in that. The bridge is what we're referring to as the one million six hundred fifty-two thousand. Window replacement in the renovation is also in the basement of this project, and that's a high priority. Landscaping where the bridge will land is also included. Renovating the water service, which we understand is a must in order to update this building, is included in this. Updating the current kitchen in the existing facility, turning it into a warming kitchen is in the base bed. And then also taking care of some masonry restoration work, approximately twenty-five percent of the building. We believe with high level of confidence that we can deliver all of this within the total fifty-two million dollar construction budget that's allowed. Also, you'll notice above the C M C fee is a contingency that's being carried in there too. So with that, there is a little bit of room. Also, I want to remind everybody that this is in the schematic design phase. So things are still being tweaked. There's some assumptions made, but this is conservative. So we are confident that we're on the right path to meeting all their needs. The next slide. Just, it talks about alternates right now that we're considering. We understand that these are desired items. We believe we can work them out. But just to walk across the board, renovating in the renovation, HVAC units, we understand there's a number of units that need to be replaced. There's a cost issue at the eight hundred forty-three thousand. Doing additional upgrades to the warming kitchen, which includes some details of ceilings, floorwork, exhaust hood that could come out. Looking at, this is a, a de-dapt alternate. If you go to more storefront post in lieu of curtain wall, that's something that we as, I think collectively would prefer not to do. We think that that's, that can be done if needed, but we wanted to show what that number represents. Also increasing the green roof area, depending on what's, what's required to meet the utility requirement for water treatment, green water treatment. Then finally, the location of the, the bridge, whether it goes in the, the third bay or the fourth bay, the window of the existing facility. There's a cost associated with that, and that we're representing here. But with all that being said, everything is tracking accordingly. Numbers are coming well. I'd like to, you know, why I have the floor just for a second. I want to come in, the design team, J S help for everything. There's been a lot of heavy lifting that's gone through these past few weeks that to get us to this, a lot of back and forth, a lot of long nights. I had very little to do with it. They did it. So I want to note that. But anyway, any questions? But anyway, any questions specifically to that moment?
No, thank you, Chris. And I can attest to my own attendance in some of these meetings that we have bi-weekly, that there has been a lot of, a lot of effort put into this and a lot of meetings of minds to put this together for us. I would simply mention about the proposed alternates that will continue to be explored, that they're not listed in priority or they're simply up there. And these are the things that will be considered budget-dependent as we move into the final design phase. But, but they're not listed as that's the number one priority, the number two, the number three. They're simply alternates that could be added to the bid. Can you go back to the previous slide? Seemed like there was a comment I had. You will note too that everything that says Reno, it's not Nevada, it's renovation. So, you know, taking out the building entry and landscaping, which, you know, would always be in this project. You may recall at one time there were 10 priorities listed in the renovation. And when you look up the proposed budget, that 10 has been reduced to four, basically. Which again goes to the effort that's been put forth by everybody to make, to make all of this possible. And those four, we were all of one mind, are required, they're necessary, we need to do them. So I just wanted to point those things out in terms of what you're looking at. So thank you.
So that's a great segue to kind of what are the next steps for the team. Further evaluating those alternates in this next phase will be one of our big efforts in terms of figuring out what exactly is the right fit. For example, on the bridge, third bay versus fourth bay, et cetera. So we'll be spending some time with that. We'll also be starting the site submittal process. That actually needs to start in November. It's about a two-month process and our goal is to finish that in the early part of next year. That process needs to start. We're also going to be digging into that lead scorecard more and really starting to confirm which credits we think we can pursue and which ones we need a little bit more information about. We'll also start talking about more about the interior of the building. We spent a lot of time talking about the exterior. And now we're going to start digging into kind of what are those finishes and what's it going to look like inside? And then we need to engage that commissioning agent as well. So those are kind of the next steps for us. And what that looks like in terms of the schedule form. So this is the final design phase that you're seeing laid out. And we pretty much identified that with future CIB meetings and what some of those agendas might look like. Starting to focus more on the site, we know we need to do a little bit more with utilities, some of the geotech work, we did get our geotech report in. And so starting to have some more conversations about the foundations. And then, as I mentioned, finishes, systems, leads, et cetera. And then what you see in that light blue are all the steps that we have to go through for the site submittal. So we're showing a pre-submittal meeting as early as November 15th and then all the way down until mid-July, with the goal of coming back to this group in mid-February for approval of the final design phase. And so this really is kind of our roadmap for the next several months. So with that, we will answer any questions that there are.
Just, just want to, if you can go back, back to that slide. Your question's been brought up, and just so there's no confusion, the very last line on your slide, post-construction, 6/30/2027, that we need to make certain, we repeat as often as we can, that the new construction phase completion is in January and this phase is when the renovation is completed. So that's what the post-construction June 30th date refers to. So that we're not, we're not implying, wait a minute, why, why do you have these two different dates? You keep talking about, one of them has to do with new construction, one of them has to do with renovation. And post-construction is when they're both completed, June 30th, is that correct?
And we don't have all the different phases here. We'll start to identify those in a little bit more detail as we get further into this phase.
Yeah, I just, just didn't want it to look like we had conflicting dates for completion going on. Thank you. Okay, now you're on to, now you're on to your two questions. Okay, questions, questions, discussion from the board, questions. Mr. Tease?
Architecture, David, if you go back to the facade, please go back to the facade on Third Street. I noticed that the brick, any one of these is, this is, that one's perfect, if you go back. I noticed that you've got this, this horizontal brick at the midpoint where last time you kind of presented it as, does it wrap around the entire building? Seems like you're going kind of halfway with this version. Tell us a little bit more about that, because it seems kind of interesting to do that. Obviously, it's the balconies edge, but it seemed like, that just seemed something different from the last time you presented it. Curious what your thinking is.
So this, this brick expanse that you're seeing here between the major vertical piers, I call it a span roll, because it's kind of a space between the windows. That really only occurs at the, where we have that outdoor roof garden. So we actually have a second level floor here that is occupied by people and plants in these two bays. But then in the next bay over, we have our curtain wall that goes all the way up the other side of the roof. And so our, our hope is to be able to afford this curtain wall all the way up to the roof, all the way down the Third Street side of the building, most of the way down the Walnut side, most of the way down the College Street side. But we have, as you remember, explored a cost-saving option, which was one of those alternates that was shown as a deduct, that would continue this span roll across the facade on Third Street. We kind of don't like that, but it is a way to save about a half million bucks. So if we decide we need that half, we collectively decide we need that half million bucks, that's, that's a direction we could go. But with this image, a little bit deceptive, because you're seeing two bays of a seven-bay building and the other five bays are all curtain walls, does that make sense?
Yeah, and I totally understand the idea of a storefront glass system as opposed to the curtain wall system that makes.
Yeah, it's just less expensive. But you know, as, as we have said before, to an average person who's not an architect, if you're looking at an aluminum glass wall system and this is curtain wall and this is storefront, most people would be hard-pressed to tell the difference.
It just, it just seems, I don't know if I have an opinion. I guess I was just trying to ask the question.
Okay, well, does it clarify?
Yeah, it did, it just seems like there's this horizontal band just at one corner of the building that, I don't know. I guess I'm kind of curious as the design develops if that will. Yeah, because it seems, brick typically doesn't flow in architecture.
You know what, I'm with you. I'm kind of not loving the idea of brick as a beam here. And if this ended up being limestone or some, some other material, I think that might actually look better. But that's kind of a down-the-road development idea. Yes.
Speaking of limestone, is where, where you show the banner signs, announcement thing in the middle there, is that limestone behind there or what is the material that you see now, right?
Yeah, I guess that's limestone behind there, because the banner's not always going to be there.
Got it, that's what I thought. It just, we've never really seen it as all white, that's what I was kind of.
Well, it may be a different texture, maybe it has like a rough cut texture.
Yeah, and I think.
That stuff just don't be evaluated.
That, that's an area for further design exploration in the final design phase. It's, it's okay, so this is a limestone pier, great, but what exactly does that look like? And you know, where's it rough and where's it smooth? And we haven't gotten there yet.
I see, I'm sorry, I see, before I forget to do this, Jim Silverstein is now online, so I want to make sure we've got him down, he's being in attendance. And he also has his little yellow hand up. So why don't we just go ahead and go to Jim and let Jim make his comment or ask his question?
Yeah, thank you, and I apologize for being late. It was user error, I wasn't able to connect with my laptop and I fell back to using the old-fashioned telephone. But, and stop me if I've, if you've already answered some of these questions that I have in my, you know, my, in my absence. But when we are back at the construction cost estimate summary, I know there was a discussion about window replacement that involved either replacing all or some of the windows. Is this a full replacement of windows or is this a partial replacement of windows?
This is a full replacement, but it's replacing them in kind. So the individual windows as opposed to taking out the whole section and going back to storefront. It's just replacing them as they are today.
Okay. And then on the alternates, there is a increase of green roof. That's an increase, that's an increase from what? Is, is there green roof in the original construction? And this is a, an addition to the green roof that's there? Or is this just the only introduction of green roof to the project at all?
So what we showed you in the image of the roof, can you go to that one, Eddie? There's a little bit of green roof on the roof garden itself. And then we have those green kind of strips that go all the way around. That represents about 10,500 square feet of green roof. What's in the budget though, right now is 7,000. But we know we have the ability to grow to 10,000 if we need to, to, in order to meet the drainage requirements and the water filtration requirements. So we're showing the maximum amount that we think we can do here. We might be able to get a little bit more down there where the mechanical equipment is, but we think this is predominantly where it is. So in the budget, 7,000, but we can go up about another 3,000 if needed.
Okay, and that leads me to another question. I know that a few people and some from city council brought up the idea of solar panels. And I know that it's not possible on the main atrium because of the free, the support that would be needed for that. But there was a mention of solar panels in this area where we're showing green roof now. Is that still an option or is that, or is that something we could do later with or without a green roof? Just how does, how does that fit in to the equation here?
Well, probably if we're going to do solar panels, it might be on that high roof. We'll have, we'll have to look at that in terms of support. And what we could do is put the connection for them to be added in the future. That may be one way to approach it or possibly look at them as an alternate too. So we're going to continue to evaluate that and see even what it does in terms of overall efficiency of the building too.
Yeah, generally speaking, solar panels don't add the same weight to a roof that a green roof does because it's, you know, solar panels aren't holding six inches of water on the roof. So I think that's more feasible to achieve on the big roof, the big high roof than, than green roof would be.
Okay. And then finally, slides 11 and 15, they show the roof lines and the overhangs, but they look very different when you compare those two slides side by side. Yeah, that one, and then if you go up to 15, yeah. They look very different to me. Is, is it some kind of optical illusion or, or I'm not seeing something as far as the roof line is concerned?
I.
Do you want to take this one? Yeah, so Jim, what you're saying, this is an elevation, so it's flat. That's why it looks, it looks the way it does. Whereas the current perspective is in perspective, so you're seeing it as you actually see it as a person. So that's what I was predicting.
Yeah, but it is, I, I think, what I was going to say was, I think those images, both the elevation and the perspective are of the same Revit model. So they are the same, in fact, building, they just look dramatically different because of the way you're seeing it.
Okay. All right, very good, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, Jim, Jim hit on one of the thoughts I was going to ask about solar. So again, because it isn't going to hold water. So hopefully that's something that we can look at at least and try to plan for down the road. And then the other is, is that as we go onto the interiors portion, again, we're still, and thinking about the limestone use, so we're still looking at a limestone type of wall where we, you know, just inside the, the, I'll say the pre-function space, is that still something that's on the table and within this budget?
We talked about it at one point, we haven't talked about it in a lot of details because again, we've been going to focus on the exterior. It's something we can continue to evaluate relative to the budget. So that's certainly on the table to discuss.
I would just say for clarity, right now it's that that wall was not a limestone in the budget.
Okay, okay.
Before we move on, I want to recognize that Peter Iverson's also in, online, one of our members of our county council.
Mr. Verge, you have a question? Can you just say a quick one, and speaking about the illusions, there's a red green hood that I think shows that the bridge is higher on this end than the new end, is that true? Maybe it just looks that way.
We're still looking at, I mean.
It doesn't look like it was sloping down towards this building.
Now, I think that would just be an optical illusion.
Okay, yeah, that's, but yeah, it's into the perspective.
We're, we're still looking at the detailed floor elevations. I mean, obviously, we know the floor elevation of this building. We haven't exactly nailed down the elevation of this building. But I think that the general thinking is if this bridge slopes, it will be very slight.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. Does anyone have any questions?
That was exactly the same question I had.
Okay. Great minds think alike.
And I'm worried about the hole in the roof, but I've already discussed that with you.
Well, maybe you want to say it publicly, just so.
Well, I'm just worried about the current climate weather, that there'd be some option to that open roof.
So if there's a hole in the roof, it will rain onto the green roof.
To the east.
Where that's on your mind. We, we kind of want that, but I understand your concern about not wanting to rain out events on that second floor occupied outdoor space.
Well, part of it's too, because that's on the north elevation, we're trying to get a little bit more sunlight down to that roof garden as well, just so it's not a terribly dark space. So that's, that's part of it. Maybe there's the ability to reduce that a little bit so that it work, kind of, we have some over the green area and a little bit more enclosure over the other, we can look at that. But, or a different material or something.
December through February, there probably won't be a lot of activity out there anyway.
Yeah.
Other questions from members of the board?
Are these trees in our budget? I mean, is that, is that part of that?
That's included in the, not that landscape. The one that's in the renovation budget is just the landscaping where the connector hits on the renovation side. The new addition expansion number includes all the landscaping associated with the building.
Probably not that exact size of tree, but yeah.
I want that exact tree, the same size.
Take a little time.
Yeah, it may take a few years.
Other, other questions from board members? All right, seeing that, thank you.
Thank you.
So if that concludes item number three, are we then on to item number four? Discussion and decision regarding CIB approval of project definition documents and authorization to move into final design phase? And who's handling this? That's you, Mr. Woodburn.
Chair, I think the, the action request here is that Section 3.38 of the architect's contract that we signed back in July states that the owner shall approve the project document, project definition documents, and that what is what is presented today. So the motion to which you should discuss and vote is whether to approve the project definition documents as presented today.
And the project definition documents includes, the presentation including the proposed base budget and the alternates, that's all part of what.
Correct.
Part of what we're seeking approval for.
Correct, and the design they put forward, yes.
Okay, so is, is there, and you're recommending that's what we do?
Yes.
So with that being the recommendation, is there, so we can have discussion, is there a motion to approve that recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Greece? So we have a motion and a second. So is there a discussion about approving this initial design phase and authorizing moving into the final design phase? Any discussion or comments, Mr. Stone?
Yeah, I, I'm really pleased with the direction of things and the timing of things. I've consulted with the county council that appointed me and I've heard nothing but support. And so I'll be voting in favor of this motion. And I just want to thank, you know, all the partners for all the work. And I know it's been a lot, you know, collaborating on this and getting us to this point. There's a lot of work ahead, but I think we're definitely on the right track, so thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Yeah, Mr. Silverstein?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one other question for the architects that I, I missed in my notes here. But at the $805 per square foot, the cost estimate on the new construction, where does that fall in terms of industry norms? Is that, is that within a range that you're used to seeing on structures similar to this?
So I think what we have, we've called around some local contractors that build structures similar to this and not so distant past, and we are cracking right line with what they're saying. Again, I want to emphasize that a lot of SD right now, so we're, we're still working on it, but we feel like we're right where we should be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or comment? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the project definition documents and authorize movement to the final. and authorize movement to the final design phase. So I would ask Mr. Whitlatch to take the role.
John Whiteheart?
Yes.
Doug Bruce?
Yes.
Eric Spoonmore?
Yes.
Joyce Pauling?
Yes.
Adam Tease?
Yes.
Jim Silver, Jay Bear?
Yes.
And Jim Silverstein?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you to, to all of our partners. I say this sometimes jokingly, but all of you stay another invoice period. You've done a really good job so far, so keep hanging in there with us. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is comments from board members. So are there other comments from board members? I would, I would only make one before we move into comments from the public. I know we have lots of friends here who are from various properties or the located south of this property, who have much interest in what we're doing with this project. I would, I would, who have both commercial and residential leases. And I would only point out a couple of things to you. The CIV does not own any of this land. So none of the land anywhere in this project is our land. None of the leases that you have are with the CIV. They are leases between, as I understand it, between PMI perhaps and the Monroe County Commissioners. So we, we don't hold any of your leases. So any extensions of them and any negotiations about them are not with this board. It will be with the county commissioners. So, and, and direction and intent from all of our public meetings, it is clear that we are expanding to the east. The hotel developer that we've selected and recommended for the city to enter into negotiations with is looking at the property to the north. So at this point in time, there isn't anything on the CIV agenda that would be disruptive of anything to the south of this property. But I wanted to go on record, I know we've, we've had conversations, I've had with them, with you individually, these, these are not our leases. So any questions you have about leases and extensions of them or conditions about them need to be directed to those with whom you had those leases. So having said that, I know there are a lot of you interested in that. I, I can tell by your representation today. But let's move into comments from the public. And you have three minutes to make comments. And if you would just simply stand and tell us who you are and feel free to make comments. There's a three minute limit and Mr. Whitlatch will keep time on the three minutes.
Where's the place to stand?
Right where you are.
To be filmed.
That's, that's, you aren't being filmed, just.
Cats, it's not covering this.
No, 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 no.
But they're supposed to.
Excuse me, would you identify yourself and tell us who you are? Because your three minutes will start right now.
My name is Joe Davis and I represent the taxpayer objection petitioners of whom there are a very growing body of folks who do not want this project. It's only being supported by you here at the CIV. You folks still realize this. But these folks, you heard from Mr. Whiteheart, they have taken ownership of this public property. They own it. And they are going to as well, probably try to usurp some of the properties that you all are concerned about, that are being held, that's right now, being held right behind the shoes. Okay, so this document, I wish to be made a part of the public record. I presented it to all of you sitting here at the table. Someone please make this a part of the record. There is a higher and better use for this property than creating a mini Lucas Oil Stadium right here in Bloomington, in which the average citizen who will be paying for this product will not even be able to attend. They'll have to purchase a ticket to be able to enter this facility. Purchase a ticket to enter this facility. This is going to open up individuals with lame brain schemes from all over the world to come in and rent. You heard it. It was a big discussion about sellable space, sellable space. We, the taxpayers, are paying for sellable space that this body is going to sell to the highest bidder. And we will not receive any benefit other than the trash that is left behind from all these individuals who care nothing for our community. Come in here and destroy what is special about our community. This property is too valuable for this harebrained scheme, which is only going to benefit of you. Only of you. And it is shame, shame, shame on all of you for trying to sell this to the public. The public does not want this.
Your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments from the public? All right.
Just one.
Yes.
I'm Jeff from Jeff's Warehouse. I have an antique and vintage store. And those of you that don't know my store, I, I have been in this business since 1980s. I've traveled all over the United States doing shows. I'm not bragging, I'm not that kind of person, but I think that we have more rich of art than anybody in Indiana. And I sleep, what I do is it's a recycling. And I've been blessed because Bloomington has a lot of professors while well traveled. And so when they downsize, instead of going to an auction, paying the auction here at 45% they're able to recycle it and it goes back into, which I would hate to see in this community. I feel like, and you could read my Google records. I mean, there, I mean, it's, I have people all the times, they, they go on to New York and different places. And there's no other place like this. And I sell to a lot of people that are interior designers from other states. My only concern is I've been coming to these meetings thinking that I'm going to get an answer and I'm going to have to start liquidating probably this next month because my lease is going to be running now. And I have 13,000 square feet full of art and stuff, and I can't do it within a month or two or I will lose my life savings. And so I'm kind of panicking. And then after the meeting, they're saying, well, Jeff, it's going to probably be a few years, but that's not what my lease says. And now after attending these meetings, my voice is kind of shaking, I'm sorry. But I'm, I'm hearing you say that, well, it's not up to you guys. So now I think, well, I kind of thought a bunch. So, you know, I, I work with Talisha and the people at PMI and they're not giving me any answers. So I just want to, you know, record, I mean, I love those people. They've been really good to me. But I'm going to have to start to do something. And I'd like to even, it's going to take me a year to liquidate and now I'm debt in nine months. And I mean, I could liquidate all at once if I want to lose, you know, my entire life savings. And it's, it is only a dollar, you know, and just give it all the money. So I'm kind of at the limit because this is the first I've heard that it's not up to this kind of, but I can speak my mind, you guys say, oh yeah, it's going to be a few years. We're going to give you, you know, you can go ahead and have that, it's going to be a year before we do anything. That's what I hear actual, the meeting, they say, don't worry about it. But if your head's on the chopping floor and if it's your life savings, I know that that's, you know, it's a bigger decision what's going on than just one person. I get that, but I am a citizen of Indiana and I do think that I contribute a lot to this camp. And that's all.
For the record, would you, would you repeat your name, Cleveland Ross name for the record?
I'm Jeff Schofield, Jeff's Warehouse.
I have, just wanted to make sure we have, has.
No issue.
Okay. Any other, any other comments from the public?
Yeah, my name, my name is Reagan. Thank you, Jeff, for your comments. I live just by Jeff's Warehouse. And so I guess I, I don't know if I can use my comments to ask questions, but so you say it's up to the county commissioners, right? About our lease, well, I, I live south, I'm in, but you said that's up to the county commissioners, is that correct?
The, the leases are between our, or PMI and the county commissioners. They are, they are not between, between you and the capital improvement.
So even when the county commissioners do or not decide to move forward with expanding south, if they do decide to do that, they will likely turn it over to you guys, the CIV, and then you guys will be in charge after that, is that correct?
Yeah, but you're getting a little bit, you're, you're getting farther ahead than the.
Oh, yeah, that's where I was going too. So my question, I guess, the, is when do you guys expect to hear from the county commissioners? Whether or not it's going to be turned over to you to expand south? When do you expect that to happen?
And let me, and, and we're kind, we're kind of getting into Q and A rather than comments, but let me, but let me respond to what you're saying because I, I think we've been consistent in the, in the, over the year that we've been meeting and the steps that we've gone through. The county has made, the county and the city have both made available to us and said that they will make available to us parcels that they own if we need them for the expansion project.
So when are you going to request that?
We have, we have not because we've already made a determination that we're going to the east, which are two parcels owned by the county. And that's it. The hotel is working with the city and the redevelopment commission to go north. So there, there is no, there is no intent on the part of this body to move any part of this project to the south. We are not requesting land to move to the south. It is not our land, we are not asking for that land.
Does anybody on the CIV disagree that there is no intent to be moving south any time in the next year?
Well, we're getting, we're getting, again, into Q and A, but I'm telling you that there is no intent on the part of the CIV to expand this project to the south. There is no intent on the, on the part of the hotel to move to the south. So no one here is talking about going into the spaces you occupy and you lease. I don't know how to make it any more clear than that. If you have questions about your leases, I understand expire, one of them may expire December of this current year, others June 30th of next year, then whoever handles that lease from your perspective needs to be talking to the county commissioners about how you expand your leases with them because you don't have them with us.
Thank you.
So I don't know how to be more clear than that.
As long as there's no intention for you guys to request that parcel?
There is, there, there is no intention. We've been meeting for a year. There is no intention on our part to move south. We've made it perfectly clear. Any other comments that are relevant to what the CIV does and to this project?
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, I'm Laura Fisher. My comments might seem a little dry compared to some of the passion that's, you know, involved here. Just to give perspective, some of the finds that we've seen earlier. I think we've been looking at the building as though we were north of Third Street, looking south at it. You're talking about the limestone and the trees. And I was thinking, again, I don't want to overstep into questions or whatever inadvertently here, but just that those trees being on the north side of the building may be difficult for them to get the light. And just making sure that we have a plan in place to foster the development of healthy trees. Presently want them to be healthy, you know, presentable looking. Just to find, make sure we're accountable for those kinds of things, but we believe we are. And then a little suggestion about the limestone. And I thought, we talked about maybe, you know, obviously it's been part of our heritage, it's part of the state and whatnot, but also that it might make for an artistic impression there as you're approaching the building. And I was wondering if we've given any consideration to having some local, maybe from a limestone hill or somewhere, is there carving that limestone? I know we talked about it being smooth or rough. And I thought, well, we're talking about art. Smooth and rough really don't turn a lot of artists on by themselves. Whereas, you know, it might be something worth considering there. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Let me, let me come back, seeing none to, I know Mr. Spoonmore had his hand up and didn't know if you wanted to make a comment.
No, I just wanted to, you know, if there's any way that we can help people find out who their landlords are and who their leases are with, we'd be more than happy to do that. But I agree with everything that you said.
Okay, all right, next item of business. I, I want to do, I want to mention that I want to thank Marky's for all the work they do in each one of our meetings and take care of our audio visual and all of our technological issues. And I should mention that each meeting, I certainly want to mention it today. So our next meeting is, our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, November 13th at 3:00 PM. And we are now adjourned, thank you all.